Good evening, everyone. Welcome to your regular meeting of your Danville City Commission for this evening, sunny evening, February the 13th, 2017. We do have a quorum minus Commissioner Cottle, who is under the weather. So I will call us to order and I'll ask that we be led in prayer by Mr. Atkins, Commissioner Atkins.
Thank you, sir. To the one who sits high and who looks low, we thank you again for such a gorgeous day in this first city we call home. We thank you for all those who are assembled in this chamber and we pray and ask that the things that we attempt to do and that we accomplish tonight, that they're always pleasingly in our sight. In his name I ask it all.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Atkins. I would like to now ask Commissioner Terry to make appropriate introductions, if you would please, ma'am.
This is my daughter, Casey Lister, and her friend, Sienna Denson. They're going to lead the pledge tonight. Both of these girls are seventh graders at Boyle Middle School and they are part of the top district symphonic band for Boyle Middle School. So, they're going to lead us tonight.
Feel free to invite, feel free to recruit them back anytime.
They're also selling candy bars for a dollar to benefit the Boyle Marching Band.
I got hooked.
I told them they were missing their opportunity with all those firefighters out there.
Before we begin to hear the public, I would like to remind everyone, especially those of us up here, we have 24 items on our agenda tonight, including an executive session. So if we could move as expeditiously as possible, I'm sure it'd be appreciated by all. With that said, we're in a section called "Hear the Public," where we're free to hear from the public on any item that is not on the agenda. Any item that's on the agenda.
Something to look back on.
Oh, you did?
Can we talk about that in our retreat?
It must have been.
I move that we approve the agenda for tonight as presented.
I'll second that.
Old dog, new tricks, I don't know. Any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is hereby approved. We're in "Hear the Public," if anyone that has anything they want to speak about relative to items on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move right on to item number one, approval of the minutes of the previous meetings for January 23rd. Your hear motion.
I move to approve the minutes from the previous meeting on January 23rd, 2017.
Your second.
Second.
Commissioner Sears, Commissioner Terry, any discussion?
I'm always the one with the correction, aren't I?
That's your prerogative, sir.
Okay, the proclamation for American Heart Month and Go Red Day, I think was read by Commissioner Sarris, is that right? Just to make it correct, not to get any fame or anything.
Further additions or corrections? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor of the minutes as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close like sign, motion carries. Item two, this is in recognition of Melissa Sheen's retirement. Chief, you're not Chief, Flue. I hope no, nothing's burning out there tonight, gentlemen.
It's okay, it'll still be going when we get there.
Ooh, put that in the press there, Ben.
No, we're here tonight, the firefighters, we're going to recognize, want to recognize firefighter Melissa Sheen. She is retiring after 20 years of service. In those 20 years, just figuring out the averages, she's made over 6,000 calls to citizens of Danville for help, for her to help people. And that's a lot to give it to you. Many of those times, you're placing your own safety and taking risks and putting your own life on the line yourself. So, recognition of that, we want to present her first. Come on up here, Melissa. Melissa doesn't care much for the limelight, so we may have to drag her kicking and screaming. First one to present you with this, City of Danville. It's a bracelet in recognition of the thin red line, and the red line of which the firefighters walk on a daily basis. The next thing we'd like to present is her leather helmet. And a helmet means, a lot of people may not realize, but the helmet means a lot to firefighters. I have, this has been written before, and I'd just like to read it here for a second. It says, "This is my helmet. There are many like it, but this one is mine. It has crepes, gouges, and burns. It has endured the blood, sweat, and tears of rigorous training. My helmet will keep me safe as I blindly crawl down a hall of scorching heat to confront what many fear. When others see my helmet, it defies me as a symbol of hope, comfort, and integrity. It has been there in moments of triumph and heartbreaking tragedy. My helmet will remind me that I perform a job that has no higher calling than protecting life. This is my leather helmet. There are many like it, but this one is mine." As I said earlier, she's not much on speed or anything, but she did ask me to read this for her, which I gladly will. She has written, February 13th, 2017. "It has been an honor to serve the City of Danville and its citizens for the past 24 years. I am especially proud to be able to say, I have been a part of the Danville Fire Department. I have had the most rewarding career a person could ever wish for, and have worked alongside the most selfless and honorable group of people. In addition, my employment with the City of Danville has allowed me the ability to take care of my daughter and myself, and for that, I will forever be grateful.
Melissa, does the hat fit? Let's see, let's see, put the hat on, let's see. There you go, there you go. Congratulations, Melissa. We thank you for your dedication and loyalty, and while we may have an exceptionally full agenda tonight, honoring somebody of your service and dedication, we would be so lucky to have this opportunity and offer it. Thank you, and back in business. Don't worry, guys, the fire's already to the ground, I mean, you know, it's done.
Let's just skip this next one too, Mr. Mayor.
You want what?
Let's just skip this one too, she doesn't like any of this.
Oh, I know, there, well, she better get used to it. Item three is a proclamation of Miss Kentucky Teen USA, our one and only Olivia Pruitt. If you allow me the luxury of reading this. Whereas Olivia Pruitt has been crowned the Miss Kentucky Teen USA 2017, and will represent both the Commonwealth and the City of Danville in the Miss Teen USA Pageant in July of 2017. The City of Danville would like to acknowledge Miss Pruitt's accomplishments, and whereas Olivia is also the reigning Miss Boyle County Fair 2017. Miss Pruitt is an exemplary representative of our community, and donates her time by leading fellowship of Christian athletes at Danville High School, being a member of the National Honor Society, a youth salute scholar, and vice president of the student body, while also working with the children's ministry of Southland Christian Church in Danville. And whereas being a participant in the pageant has proven Olivia to be a gracious young lady, she has demonstrated her beauty, charm, and grace that are integral parts of the time-honored ideal of young womanhood. Miss Pruitt is applauded for the exemplary decorum she has exhibited in this worthwhile endeavor, and whereas Olivia Pruitt is commended for the honor and esteem she has brought to her family, school, and community, and for being a role model of the youth. Now therefore, the City of Danville Board of Commissioners on February 13th, 2017, to hereby congratulate Miss Pruitt and urge all citizens to wish her success, as she represents Danville, Kentucky, in the Miss Teen USA Pageant." We've got the formality here because she is no longer Miss Boyle County and all that, she's now in big league, protocol, the protocol says that they want photographs, so I'm going to ask all the commissioners to get ready to come down and get a picture.
She's got something to say, man.
All right, I just want to say thank you all so much for having me tonight. I'm so honored to be the new Miss Kentucky Teen USA and represent not only Danville, but the whole state of Kentucky this year. The past three weeks that I've been crowned, I've already had the opportunity to go to Austin, Texas, which was my first time flying alone and let alone going to Texas. I got to serve military families at Camp Mayberry. We got to give back to daughters of like local, I mean, active military members, and we got to give them prom dresses given by Sherry Hill herself. So we gave out a thousand prom dresses that day, which was awesome, and we just got to serve the families, which is an incredible experience. And this is just the beginning of this year, and I'm so excited. Thank you again for having me.
Give some family members. Introduce your family members.
And thank you to my mom and grandma.
There you go.
And also, her grandfather, Mr. Jim Ryan, was a city commissioner.
I wonder if you'd save one of those promises for the dead, Mr. DiMarco.
Congratulations again. Item four is the Big Brother, Big Sister of the Bluegrass update. Is there action needed?
Yeah.
Your hear motion to accept the proclamation.
Don't move.
Second.
Commissioner Terry and Commissioner Atkins, any discussion?
You make us proud, Olivia.
Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close like sign, motion carries now, Big Brother, Big Sisters.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the direction of Big Brothers, Big Sisters of the Bluegrass Regional Program Advisory Committee, I wanted to take this opportunity to sort of reintroduce our mentoring program and make city officials aware of some things on the horizon for our agency. There is a lot of new energy and excitement within our agency, thanks in large part to some new faces. My name is Ryan Pointer, and I am the Community Engagement Coordinator for our Boyle, Gare, Lincoln, and Mercer Counties Office. I'm joined tonight by our President and CEO from our Lexington headquarters, Andrea Uden, and also by a member of our Regional Program Advisory Committee that I mentioned earlier, Jennifer Kirchner, and our, a way working with the children and volunteers in our program is our Program Manager, Destiny Richards. I would like to say that I hope everyone here has at least a marginal awareness of the mission of Big Brothers, Big Sisters, to provide children facing adversity with strong and enduring professionally-supported one-to-one mentor in relationships that change their lives for the better forever. Big Brothers, Big Sisters of the Bluegrass is celebrating our 60th anniversary this year, and it's truly an exciting time. I encourage anyone who is interested in learning more about our program or volunteering with some of these children that we have mentioned, to contact us. City Commissioners, you should have received in your information all of our agency contact information for those purposes. Anyone interested in the audience, you can visit our website at vbs-bluegrass.org. One of my primary responsibilities is to develop resources that allow us to operate in this region. With that said, our largest annual fundraising program is coming up here in just a couple of months. It is our Bowl for Kids' Sake that has a rich 30-year history here in central Kentucky. This is a program that is, that is engaged in by Big Brothers, Big Sisters agencies all across the nation. It's a truly exciting and fun way to do some good and to raise some resources that allow us to have this impact in children's lives. With that said, I would like to extend a special invitation to city commissioners to join us as we kick off this campaign with our Bowling Information Session Breakfast coming up in just a week, on Wednesday, February the 22nd, 8:00 a.m. that morning, at the brand new Holiday Inn Express, Holiday Inn Express and Suites here in Danville. That's really an opportunity for us to present everything that there is to know about Bowl for Kids' Sake and our agencies. We will be welcoming some of our volunteers, as well as others of our community partners. And like I said, we'll present everything there is to know about becoming involved and how our program works. With that, I will answer any questions that anyone might have, but I also want to hand this over to Ms. Kirchner. Does she have a few words?
I never have a few words, Ryan, but quickly, I'm honored to serve on the advisory committee, and I encourage Ryan and his team to come, because I think what they're doing is fantastic. And in a time where we know the drug epidemic is something that's affecting all of us, being a big brother, or a big sister, or donating is a tangible way, I think, to make a difference. These kids, more and more need positive role models and experience that there's other ways. So to me, this is a real-life, practical way to be involved. And my second point is, commissioners, that I challenge you to form a bowling team. I will be at fiscal court tomorrow, challenging the magistrates to have a bowling team, and the EDP will have a bowling team, and perhaps we can take some of our frustrations out on the bowling alley and raise some money. So we don't, we'll get a little competitive spirit and bowl in the afternoon, raise some money for some charity, and have a good time doing it. So I hope to see you out there.
I'll be at the magistrate's fiscal court meeting tomorrow. I'll see what kind of reception you get today. Thank you. I think it's a good challenge, I'm in.
How many do you need for a team, Jennifer? Four to six is what we've got. We're going to nominate Cottle, since he's not here. Yeah, he's the captain.
It'll be fun. Thank you for all y'all did. Excellent program.
One more thing, what's the date on the actual bowling event?
April 29.
April 29.
And time to practice, right? I was actually thinking, I was going to save this for Commissioner comments, but I'll bring it up, that I thought I might sponsor that team over Boyle County that won the state championship. Do you think that'd be fair?
Have representation, sure. They got spikes on, do you think that'll work? Item five is the Water Plant Progress Report. We have with us tonight, Rich Smith, place of Brent Tipp.
Oh, good evening. Pleasure to be here. Mayor said, I'm Rich Smith here for Brent Tipp tonight, kind of a pinch hitter, so hopefully I'll do the presentation justice. We just had a short update on the water plant progress. Also have Ross Guffey, who's here tonight, from HDR, who's one of our resident inspectors on the job, so if I get stumped, maybe Ross can bail me out. So just have a short presentation, kind of an update on the progress of the plant. This is, probably recognize this photo, this is the face of the plant that faces Lexington Avenue, the new filter building portion. These are some more recent photos flyover of the site. This is Lexington Avenue side here, and this is the new filter building here. This is the GAC building in the back, and the chemical building. So this is Cecil Avenue here. So those are, these buildings in the back are the last two to be completed. They're currently in construction now. It's another flyover photo from the back of the plant, this being Cecil. Okay, so this is the GAC filter building. There's four granular activated carbon filters under construction. So this is the very tall building in the back. The filters themselves are about 12 feet deep with activated carbon. This is the pipe gallery adjacent to the filter building. So we have finished water piping here in the blue. We have drain piping is in the red, and the gray color is the backwash piping. So it kind of gives you a scope of the depth of the building and all the piping and instrumentation valves and so forth that goes in there. This is the lower level of the filter pipe gallery, another view. The second part of the project was the work at the raw water intake. So this is, these photos are at the raw water intake. These are the three vertical turbine pumps that draw the water from Lake Harrington up through a long shaft. Two of the three pumps were replaced. This is the discharge piping in the raw water intake coming up from the pumps. New surge relief valves were installed. So if there's a water hammer situation and surge comes back, it protects the pumps and the piping, and dumps the water back into the shaft. This is the chemical building at the raw water intake, sodium permanganate feed pumps that were installed there. Back to the new plant, the downtown plant, this is the part of the new administrative area, the coffee station. Very important, especially early in the morning. The new test lab that was constructed adjacent to the training room. So this is a secondary lab that supports the main lab of the plant. New administration office space. This is really a nice area, nice benefit, is the training room, which was the old filter area from the original plant, which is repurposed, and turned out very nice. And this is the waiting area adjacent to the training room. Okay, in the back, to the back of the plant, this carbon silo formerly sat right about over here. The old water tower was over here. So the carbon silo had to be relocated for the chemical building, which is here. So that's all been done now, relocated on a new pad. This is the inside of the filter building, or the chemical building, rather. As you can see from the date on the photo, this is pretty recent. So this is kind of what they're finishing up now, at the inside of the chemical building, getting all the tanks, piping valves, containment, instrumentation, all that stuff in place. This is a little more dated photo from the back. The GAC building is the tall building, and this is the chemical building looking from Cecil Avenue side. Installation of the new roof on the chemical building. Here's just a few facts about the project. It's gone on just about three years, a little over a thousand days of construction to date. The bid amount was just under $24 million. Judy Construction is the general contractor. To date, just under $20, $21 million of that's been paid out, about 87%. Approved change orders to date are just over $400,000, just a little over 2% of the value of the contract. The new side was switched over back in December of 2015, so that was essentially the halfway point when water was run through the new plant. And from that point on, they've been working on the old side and redoing the old side. The estimated completion date, is probably what everyone's most interested in, is April 24th, 2017, so it's rapidly approaching. And again, most of the remaining work is in the GAC and chemical buildings, and there'll be, of course, some site work and paving and things like that. So that concludes our update. I'll be happy to field any questions, anyone has any.
I have a question. And I get asked this often. You know what it is. Earl knows what it is. What is the estimated reopening of Cecil's branch?
At this point, it's really weather dependent. The site work back there behind the GAC building, you can't see in that photograph, but if you noticed on, I think the third photograph, third aerial shot behind it, the building was really on the street, all the equipment was on the street for work. As they finish that building on the exterior, they are prepared now to begin working, the rehab of the land behind that building. But that will not be finished until some of the asphalt work has been able to be done, which will not be until the asphalt plant opens. Long story short, four to six weeks probably, but it's majority of that weather dependent. As long as we have good weather like this, it will be ready to receive asphalt, it will be soon. If it's negative weather, it will just...
There was a, Jennifer, you may have sent it out, it was about water quality, there's a, Melissa McAllister was leading a discussion about water quality in Harrington Lake. Would you like to give us some brief synopsis of that? And if so, is there anything we need to be addressing for our water treatment people? You want to see my bowling shoes? I'm putting you on the spot.
Give her a mic, Jennifer, take a mic.
The more I learn about the water plant, which has been a lot lately, I'm really, really impressed with the facility, the way that it's going to function, and the water that it's going to provide. Basically, Melissa said yesterday, Harrington Lake water is fine, it could be better. There are some things that we're looking for, things like septic tank failures and farming practices, fertilizers, they increase organic compounds in water. But the way this water plant was set up, really, really, the community should feel good and safe about the water that's coming from their faucet. And I'm actually a grateful citizen for this construction and how well it's gone. I've been there, Earl's been nice enough to show me around, but the administrative area, the meeting spaces are fantastic. But Lake Harrington, I think, is something that we all need to care about, and I'm not sure we all do. People who live on the lake care about it, but when you remove from the lake, littering, you know, just things that... just things that, that we could all do to take better care of the water ethic is something that going forward, we're all going to be talking about, community education.
Is there anything, is there anything new in that report that is different about the lake? I guess that's what I'm looking for.
I don't think so, I mean, there's a lot of monitoring and sampling, there's new sam- and Earl could speak to this better than I could, but new sampling that's going on coming up this summer and fall. There's a lot of really smart people paying a lot of attention to Lake Harrington. So no, I, I didn't take anything new, I found it to be informative, but not anything of concern or new.
That's all, thank you.
To add a little to what she's saying, I mean, it's, it's an excellent water source, we're very lucky here in Danville to have it. It does present some treatment challenges, especially certain times of year. But the GAC contacters are going to give you a level of treatment that you've not had up to this date, so. And they'll be very beneficial for maybe some of your natives and things like that.
And Mayor, because of the watershed lies, majority outside of the city of Danville's jurisdiction, of course, we contribute from Clark's Run and also Spears Creek to water in the lake. We, through our stormwater program, would like to continually educate the public and take, now to reiterate the importance of, of managing our stormwater quality, that we don't litter, that we don't allow the, the things that do contribute to debris as well as nutrient type in the form of septic tanks pollution into the watershed, that we manage that intelligently. A big piece of that is community education and public outreach. The city commission, you guys have funded the reconstruction of the water plant park on Lexington Avenue. We're actively seeking ways to implement that now, the plans are generally complete, consistent with the concept plan. We are, we, we hope to bring to you a source water protection program grant application soon. If we can make the deadline, we think, think we're going to submit that with your all's endorsement. The idea there is to help fund that location, the construction of that location, the implementation of the education component at that site. So that, so that to the extent we can inform our citizens and the folks that, that we are partners with here locally of the need to address water quality through stormwater runoff we can. And then, then folks ask us oftentimes, where does your wastewater go? Will we somewhere down the road do recycling the wastewater facility in the gray water for industries, those type of things? Important thing folks realize locally here is that all of our wastewater is 100% recycled through the lake. Actually, our wastewater plant discharges in Clark's Run and subsequently discharges into Lake Harrington. And so while we talk about water quality and talk about all these things we influence, the drinking water and the water quality going into the plant is, is definitely impacted by how we treat our central sewer system and as well as the enforcement of our stormwater regulations that we have locally.
One more thing, I, I think above anything what I've learned is that Lake Harrington is an economic development factor. And not only should we care about clean drinking and swimming water, but that provide, that's an incredible resource that we have access to and it, and has a lot of potential that we can exploit. Use to our benefit.
Go. Good point, thank you. Anything else?
Appreciate the update.
Thank you all.
Done, good job out there. I think that the, the community will be really pleasantly surprised when that open house comes, it's very nice out there. That classroom addition is, is going to be well utilized, I hope.
Thank you, sir. Safe travels back home. Item six is the resolution 2017-02-13-01. This is the Main Street Annual Letter of Commitment, please.
Are you doing this, April?
Good, thank you.
I don't know if you have copies of the letter in front of you, but I have them for you just in case. I've also given you our reinvestment statistics from 2016 and our copy of our annual report from 2016 as well. Tonight, I am asking for your commitment to continue supporting the Heart of Danville. It's part of our annual recertification process. It's a letter that pretty much says, support the work we do financially and publicly as well, so. And part of that is after the mayor's signature is required.
Mayor, I would prefer if we maybe delayed this until the permanent director is hired at Heart of Danville. Not that we won't continue to support Heart of Danville, but depending on the qualifications of the person hired, it could change our role a little bit.
I was actually named director today, it was made official.
Oh. Well, congratulations.
Hot off the prep.
So, which leads me to, this might change our role a little bit. And I know you probably really don't want to say anything, Mr. Scott, but I'm, I'm deferring to you on this.
The city of Danville has for quite a number of years entered into this annual letter of commitment with the Heart of Danville. And in so doing, it affirms the city government's intent to preserve and promote downtown and historic buildings. The executive director is required to meet the qualifications of the Heritage Council in terms of the performance of the Secretary of Standards, interior standards for maintaining historic property. And those are spelled out in terms of professional qualifications that the Heritage Council has advised us what its requirements are. The council, as I understand it, and the neighbors to China, if I misspeak, but the council has to affirm basically the qualifications of any director hired, that they meet those qualifications.
Yes, those qualifications were affirmed by the Heritage Council prior to me getting the position.
Okay, well, I think that then addresses that, that issue, I wasn't aware of the filling of the position or the fact that the Heritage Council had affirmed any candidate for those positions. So, for the position, so I think that does answer the question then, and then it gets to the funding support of the Heart of Danville from the city and what work plans actually will be developed in conjunction with the heart to achieve our common mission.
Do you hear a motion by resolution 2017-02-13-01?
So moved.
Commissioner Sears and Commissioner Atkins, are you there in discussion? I will call the question, all in favor of resolution 2017-02-13-01, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, like a sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Item seven, this is the zone change approval request on War Admiral. Ms. Berry?
Thank you, I'm here on behalf of the Planning and Zoning Commission representing their recommendation on a zone change for attractive land, it's 2.347 acres. It's located at 109 War Admiral Road. The current zoning is NCC, which is Neighborhood Conservation Classification. And the proposed zoning is Highway Commercial, the designation on that is HC. Planting Commission held a public hearing on January, January 18th. At that time, we heard from the applicant, the property owner, and the proposed use, which is party on air. Current owner, I think, is here, Mr. Hensley is here tonight, if you had any questions for him. But basically, at that public hearing, there was no opposition that was presented. And therefore, based on findings that were submitted by the applicant, the Planning Commission is recommending approval of that zone change for the property from NCC to Highway Commercial. So I'm just passing along that recommendation. If you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer those.
Any questions, Paul?
Oh yeah, I just, one question for information that is it was, as it's currently zoned, they exhibit about the 34 multifamily units that go away. If we change it to the Highway Commercial, and the Highway Commercial is, I know, spaced for possibly three to four businesses?
So this site does have some constraints when you look at drainage, I know it was an exhibit presented with, along with the zone change request, just kind of highest and best use, 34 multifamily dwelling units would fit on that location under the current zoning regs. The proposal that was presented, the conceptual development plan was one additional building with some accessory parking. They're also proposing not to, not to create an entrance, a new entrance, but to use the existing entrance off the existing party on air located on War Admiral.
Anything else? Then do I hear a motion?
I move to accept the request that presented by Danny Lee Moore.
Commissioner Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Terry, you in discussion, if there's any?
Presented well. I have no questions.
Seeing none, chair will call the question, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, like a sign, motion carries.
Thank you very much, I should be.
Mayor, I'll have that ordinance prepared for you next week, or next PD, rather.
All right.
It's just been a little while since we've had one, so I'll remind the commission, your vote today is your instruction to me to prepare the necessary ordinance to effectuate the change at the next meeting.
Item eight is the Rotary International Dinner, Chamber Steel Challenge Banner Request. Isn't that you?
I'm not Carol, but she's on her way. So we are simply requesting that we, both the Rotary International and the Chamber, have a banner out on Main Street on the rail, three by 16, or allowed up to three by 37. And we would like it for three weeks prior to each event, the International Dinner is March 18th, and the Chamber Steel Challenge is May 6th.
I move to approve the two banner requests that presented. Almost been approved by staff.
Thank you.
I'll hear that by Commissioner Atkins, second by Mr. Terry. The comments, seeing none, I'll call the question, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, like a sign, banner granted.
Thank you.
Item nine is the Code Enforcement Monthly Report, Ms. Lester.
Good, isn't it? I'm just going to hit a couple of these highlights here, but you know, we've got the monthly report for the month of January. We had seven nuisance complaints, 60 inspection complaints. Only had one animal complaint this month, I usually have more than that, but.
I can give you a few if you need it. Give me time, give me time.
I wonder whose, I wonder whose animal that was.
That wasn't my animal, was that mine? That wasn't my animal.
No, that wasn't yours. Or was that in February?
Walked into that one, didn't I? I had, we have 327 liens on file, we recovered 33 this month for $4,374. We had eight existing structures, total of 270 inspection activity complaints for the month. And I'll be tweaking this report to add more stuff to it, and if there's anything specific you want more information on. See anyone have any questions on that?
I have a quick question, are, are you seeing a pickup in activity of people being more aware and relaying that to your office?
Yes, they're doing that through Facebook, they're doing it through email, they're doing it through phone calls, face-to-face contact, but we are, the activity is picking up. The next item on there is the RFP for the Historic Design Guidelines. We asked for RFPs for that, we only received one.
Item 10.
Sorry, I'm moving too fast.
Court, all right, keep moving.
Of a cultural resource analyst, and we, their quote was $16,351, which falls under our 18,000 project total, which, of which we have a certified local government grant through the Heritage Council. We do have to have this project finished by June 30th, so we will be very busy adding to everything else going on.
Can I just ask what, what exactly this project entails?
We'll be updating our current design guidelines that we use in conjunction with our historic district ordinance to make decisions on the certificates of appropriateness when people want to either build, add signage, or do anything like that. So we'll be updating those. This company also did Frankforts, and they look very nice, so we color design guidelines. And they'll help us a lot with interpretation and make it more clear. And also help the people who are applying for certificates to be able to see specific examples and pictures that are not in our current guidelines, or not to the extent that we'd like them. It'll also address things like murals, that'll be conversation we'll have, but it's not addressed in our current guidelines.
What was the VIT price?
$16,351.
You got a one-time fee of that?
That's a one-time fee. Well, that's a total for all the, there, there's a detail on page 16, Ms. Atkins.
Do you hear a motion from resolution 2017-02-13-02? Removed. And Commissioner Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Sears, we are in discussion. Seeing none, chair will call the question, vote, all in favor of resolution 2017-02-13-02, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, like a sign, motion carries. Continue right along to resolution 2017-02-13-03, this is the CLG grant.
We are asking, actually, to apply for two grants. So we would like to purchase a Ruskin Arc software, which would allow us to put our historic properties into their database. That's at a cost of 1,500 for a thousand properties. And create a database of those historic properties and make those accessible for everyone in the community, as well as for staff in Heart of Danville. It's not something that we have, you know, easily searchable tool, it's in hard copy right now for most parts. And so we'd like to do that for the first application for a total of $10,000. And the second application we'd like to apply for is to nominate the historically African-American neighborhood of Old Wood on this road to the National Register. The surveys have been done, but there is work in getting that to the, through the National Register process. And so that grant would be for a total of $8,000.
Do you hear a motion?
I move to approve resolution 2017-02-13-03 as presented.
Commissioner Terry, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Sears, we are in discussion. I have a question.
Yes, sir.
That stretch through there is narrow, and it has been a bottleneck as an entry point and an exit point to Danville. If, if we do this, what are going to be the complications from, from this point? Should we ever get the state to agree to?
It won't save the buildings, but it will identify them as being culturally significant. So if, they have to go through a process called Section 106 review, and that will kick in. And so whenever there's federal funds involved, then it could result in protection or mitigation funds if the properties are threatened. But it won't, it won't keep them from being demolished.
Is it all of those properties along that, or just some? Is it all of those properties along that or just some?
It's just that Old Wood on this road. Um it's like, I think it's some of. I'm not sure. We've had them surveyed. Um and I don't know exactly what parts of that I'd have to look into.
But there are some of those, some of those buildings are abandoned. So.
That's where I was going with that.
You do it. We have a code. So how do we resolve that?
But some of those that are abandoned may not necessarily, the the structures themselves may not necessarily be historical.
They would go through the process. There's a process outlined in our historic district ordinance as if if they want, if you want to demolish those. Then there's a process set out and you know, Architecture Heritage Board could approve those to be demolished if chosen.
I guess this also may qualify you for applying for certain grants for that area of town as well. And I've seen you covering it up from Lexington Avenue to Main Street on Old Wood Road. Is that the port we're talking about?
I don't have the map in front of me. I'm sorry. I'm not sure.
That's my understanding.
That's your understanding too? Okay.
That was my understanding too, but there there wasn't a map, so uh that's what we're trying to determine. I would be glad to forward that to you after noon.
Yeah, I think the other question that Mayor probably was giving that is that if this is designated there, there's a table that is actually widening the road to take care of that. Would this prevent us from widening that road to take care of that? I would think that, but I don't see that.
Or does this give us opportunity to. Uh remodel and maybe repurpose those structures?
And you will have another chance to have input. Uh nominations to the National Register have to be approved by you through the process. You'll get another chance for this. This is um you also have to approve us accepting the grant for these. This is just allowing us to apply for the grants.
Okay, so but if we receive it, is that possibly going to be a gateway to get more grants for to. Get interested parties to be involved in making that a better section of town?
Possible. I might know more about that than you will.
It seems apparent that there is some degree need for investig- additional investigation and a report regarding what the uh benefits or drawbacks of receipt, actual acceptance of the grant would be if in fact received. My understanding is that typically when you have a historic district that is approved and recognized. For to do, for example, road construction or any major improvements in the area and require special hearing and special consideration be given to the potential impact on that historic area. So I think there will be those additional steps that would have to be considered in the process of making roadway improvements, for example, for properties listed on the uh National Register. So it doesn't necessarily preclude development, but it requires consideration. It requires a consideration be given of potential impact upon the uh area of special recognition. So these are questions that I think we can develop a Q and A on and have for the commission if we do receive the grant prior to your acceptance of the grant.
And would it and would it be included in our historic district? If we were to get this designated?
I think you would have to take affirmative action to to expand the district.
Yes.
Well, the neat thing about this is that this gives Danville a chance to salvage a part of the African-American historic fiber, fabric. I like that statement in there because you know what happened to the secondary area. So this is the material that we're gonna assist to try to see if there's something we can do to. Salvage small, we made a part of the African-American fabric. So to get, and then if the grants for eighteen thousand dollars, both leads.
The total would be eighteen thousand.
And the max will be six thousand?
Well, let's get that right.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the questions of vote. All in favor of Resolution twenty seventeen oh two thirteen oh three? You wanna do it separately, Stephen? Can we do it together?
The way I've written it can be together, Mayor.
It's just one resolution.
That's correct. I I did one re- one one resolution.
Twenty seventeen oh two thirteen oh four. Software she was recommending.
This is not.
That's not software yet.
Okay.
Two soft- two softwares, but this is the other one. Both grants serve.
Been a long day, yeah.
Gonna get longer too. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close like sign. Motion carries. Now we're on what, item twelve?
Yes.
Resolution twenty seventeen oh two thirteen oh four, software recommendation, another.
Um I've been looking for software for us to use for codes enforcement and um two of the quotes that I got was from Comcate and from Acela. Um Acela was considerably higher. Both companies are very good and but we think that Comcate will meet our needs. Allow us to write citations in the field and um get all of our information so that all the staff can use it together. Um it 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 will all have the lien holder notification um in there that will help us be in compliance with House Bill four twenty-two. And that the cost for that software would be a total of nine thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars with thirty-five hundred of that being implementation cost. The Acela was gonna be a total of twenty-three thousand dollars. Um both those companies are in the top one hundred of GovTech Solutions, so. Um and several Kentucky cities are using the Comcate software.
Do you hear a motion?
I move for approval of Resolution twenty seventeen dash fourteen dash thirteen dash oh four as presented by staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Second?
Second.
Chris, this is serious. Question. Usually when you have something that's gonna cost half of the other. It's just something, something not right. Either one is best available price or 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 the other one's not gonna be adequate.
The Acela is like the Cadillac version. It and and we've talked with, we've gone through demos for both softwares and we feel like for the price. And what it does, that Comcate will meet our needs um at this point in time. That may change in the future once we get everything going, but at this point we feel like they will meet our needs and we couldn't justify. The additional expense for what they're offering.
They did.
And if you could, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No.
Oh, I'll just make a comparison that uh the annual maintenance fee for the one we approved is sixty-three hundred dollars and the annual maintenance fee for the. The other one is eight thousand dollars, so you get down to the.
It's the implementation cost.
Yeah, yeah, so the annual maintenance is.
And they wouldn't negotiate that implementation cost.
We talked about it before, this coming forward to us. Um can you kind of explain uh maybe to the public and remind us. How the payback is on having the software in terms of either efficiency or man time or?
All of the above. It will help us as far as um the officer can take the picture, write the citation, go ahead and print it out and post it on the door at that point. But also by the time they get back to the office, the information's already in the database. They're not having to take notes, write information and come back and put it in. Um trying to share it between two codes officers and administrative staff. We're all copying and pasting, emailing back and forth, so it'll be a considerable time savings for us. Once we get it going. Initially, as usual, it will take some putting together and more time, but then once it's all in there, it will be a big time saver.
Any further questions or comments? None of. The other question for the vote. All in favor of Resolution twenty seventeen oh two thirteen oh four signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close like sign. Motion carries. City manager report, Mr. Scott.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Uh the city commission will recall perhaps a year or more ago that they supported a resolution to establish the Safe Cities Coalition. With the goal of reviewing all activities in our community. Uh and to make it safer for everyone who lives here with the idea, I think of that as a coalition. That they might become certified, which would um promote economic development prospects for the city as well. As achieving uh the the desired objectives of having a safer community. Uh on Thursday of this week. February sixteenth at five thirty till seven P M, the Safe Cities Coalition is sponsoring a um community forum. Where the Sheriff's Department and the City of Danville Police Department, the sheriff and the police chief will be discussing uh. What we do as a community to have effective and safe law enforcement and good community relations. Uh we're looking forward to this presentation, which will enable citizens the opportunity to ask questions. Or to suggest how we may uh further improve uh community policing actions that lead to safe communities. Uh so that's a uh a meeting that uh I think is very good, that our our top law enforcement officials have agreed to participate with the community, so I encourage. Uh your attendance and those of the citizens uh at five thirty on uh February sixteenth at the uh Inter County Energy Building on Houstonville Road. The second meeting I want to bring to your attention is one uh the following week on um February the twenty-second at nine A M. Where we will have the presentation be made regarding our energy efficiency improvement, scope of work. Uh and that is scheduled to begin at nine at nine A M. Uh and I I think despite having time allocated for the afternoon, it should conclude, I think, by twelve noon. And we will review uh the findings of our uh energy uh savings project and there will be some recommendations made to the city commission for consideration. I don't think you'll need to make a final determination that morning, but it will be honing in on the uh the opportunities for the city. To enter into a public-private partnership uh and to save money uh in time uh equal to or more than the cost of replacement of some capital equipment items. So those are the two main things I just wanted to mention to you at this time and to encourage your participation if you are available.
Yes, sir.
Recession, please.
Uh. Commissioner Atkins would like a five-minute recess. Let's leave everybody.
Sorry, I was thinking about these young folks. You're ready to talk, but you're gonna have to wait five more minutes, guys.
It's between that and homework. You don't mind waiting, do you?
Oh, it's good.
All in favor of taking a recess signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close like sign and take five. You're back in regular session. Uh did you complete your comments, Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir. I'm just mentioning the rest of the meeting, so.
For you were so rudely interrupted with a recess. Um Commissioner Atkins had it had an engagement he had to get to.
Um we are now in the hear the public uh section about anything that is on your minds.
I was walking, so I'll just come up here. Um I just wanted to let you all know on Wednesday afternoon at four o'clock. Uh in the community room at the Public Library, will we be, we will be reshowing and hosting um R K G's presentation from their last visit with elected officials. Just to give the community one more time to come out and listen and ask questions and also try and get some more elected officials also, so just wanna let you know.
Wednesday, four o'clock at the library.
Right.
Give this to the gentleman.
Guys are up next. I'm just calling it.
Gentlemen, if you will, um feel free and introduce yourselves, please.
Okay, um my name is Dakota Harden.
Speak up, guys.
I'm Trevor Voe.
And I'm Ethan Baker.
And uh we've come here to uh voice our concerns about the Tennessee pipeline that runs over Dix River. Um we've come here from Boyle County High School and um we understand that there's a a resolution has been filed on the subject, but we just kind of wanted to voice our concerns on it. Um I mean, obviously, the pipeline was laid into the ground over seventy years ago. Um and it was meant to carry natural gas from the Gulf sites up to uh northeastern portions of the U S. Um the pipeline owners wish to abandon the pipeline um when they actually want to um repurpose the pipeline to carry natural gas. Um liquids or NGLs uh and this would reverse the flow within the pipeline from northeastern states to the Gulf region. And these would be used to actually um, these would be purposed to construct lawn mowers. So um. So it would actually put more pressure on the pipeline if liquids were ran through it. Um and that highly increases increases the possibility of a bust to occur. And uh when these NGLs are introduced to the environment, they rapidly spread and can be ignited from miles away from the actual bus site. Um which highly increases the probability of an explosion to occur. Um and that that's one of the main concerns is we don't want pipelines blowing up, you know? Um but uh there's also grave environmental concerns with this. Um it runs over the Dix River, which empties into the. Well flows into the Harrington Lake, which is Boyle County's main water supply. And um if a po- pipeline were, if the pipeline were to bust. Anywhere near the river, then it could cause brave and environmental concerns to the wildlife within the lake around it and the public who are living near the lake. Um but yeah, I'll turn.
Hi, uh as stated before, my name is Ethan Baker. Um the pipeline itself was not designed uh originally to carry liquids. It's as stated, uh as stated before, it is over seventy years old and has a history of leaks and ruptures. Um therefore, transporting NGLs in this pipe will pose a serious uh health risk and safety risk to the people of Boyle County. Um as reported by the Danville Boyle County Chamber of Commerce, when NGLs leak approximately eighty-five percent, will turn into a highly flammable gas when exposed to the air. And will settle in low places such as valleys, creeps, rivers and other low points. Uh the other fifteen percent will remain a liquid state and has the potential to contaminate the water supply in Harrington Lake with chemicals such as benzene, which is known to be a human carcinogen. And um just to be clear, we are not arguing against the transportation of NGLs via pipelines, but we are rather stating our concerns with this pipeline in particular. Um we would appreciate any appreciate any action uh taken to address or prevent such um an action from happening.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Any use up?
Any comments for these three gentlemen?
Was this a class project or is this just something that you're interested in?
Um so well, we are part of our AP Government Class. Uh it's um we've been actually interviewed by this gentleman here from the advocate before. Um. So we had the Citizen Gen project, right? Um and what it was is we had to go and we had to find something within our community that we wanted to change, that we wanted to see changed within. So we we had free rein over what it had to be and we had prior knowledge of the pipeline and its existence over Harrington Lake from a prior teacher. Um that we knew from Washington County. And we actually met him while we were at a uh a meeting with uh our Senator Mitch McConnell at the. Uh the outlet office over by B C D C. Um we attended that a few months back and we uh met him outside and we were talking about the pipeline. And um when our Citizen Gen came, project came around, we uh noticed that it, I mean, it it's been on the agenda before uh in the city council, but. We didn't know about it at that point. Um so we did some research and we were uh we were kind of disturbed by it. So um we decided to make that what we was going to discuss and um we just thought we would kind of make it public to the community and raise awareness.
So to answer your question, yes, it is part of a class project and we're sort of mandated to be here, but also. But also it's something that we we are interested in. We're passionate about.
Since you're kind of interested in it, um Earl, you wanna uh let them know how many counties our water supply serves?
Our water supply, um let's say it like this. The counties that have an opportunity to drink water out of the Danville Water Treatment Plant. Include Boyle County, Mercer County, Washington County, Casey County, Lincoln County and Garrett County.
How many customers?
Uh at Will, when you add in the Washington County, that those customers, the population and the influence of water from the lake in terms of for drinking is about a hundred thousand now. Uh on a everyday basis, seventy-five thousand.
A lot of people, more than you realized, Joe.
Guys picked a good one. You're not alone in terms of fighting that, so.
Thank you.
Thanks for your involvement, guys. Appreciate it.
Dakota also happens to be a very talented trumpet player.
And we have an actor up there, right, Ethan?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all.
Alright, anything else from the public? Seeing none, we'll go into commissioner's comments if there are any. I'd like to let the public know that on K E T tonight, if we get out of here at eight o'clock, there's a special on opioid abuse, a subject that we all are familiar with, but I don't think it's one that we can get too familiar with, because it continues to change and continues to amaze me. I don't know if you saw the elections in paper Sunday? In, in, in the pharmacies alone, in Clay County, Manchester, the amount of opioid prescriptions is averages out to a hundred and fifty-five doses per person in the county. There's eleven pharmacies. What's the, what's the population of Manchester? Seven hundred and something?
Yeah, it's much smaller than Danville.
This is crazy. I can't think of anyone.
Well, we had the privilege of attending the Chamber banquet Friday night. I know the mayor was there, and Mr. Scott was there. I don't know if anyone else was there, because there were a lot of people there, so I didn't really get to see everybody, but some very active people honored there Friday night, and one of them was Hope.
Hope Network, yeah.
Yes, one of them was Hope Network, so that was a good time.
So this Saturday would be the benefit for Pioneer Playhouse, is one of the, one of the entities here in the city that we support, is the City Commission, but they certainly go to raise their own money, not through just putting on plays, but through the Smarty Grill Party, so that's going to be interesting. I've already done my shout-out, but I'm going to do it again, that in addition to Miss Teen Kentucky, we had the state championships over here at Bowling, at Boyle County High School in Bowling, so that's, we're such a football town, that it's kind of nice to see something else happening here, too.
They're on the list. I've been told they're on the list.
Something else, can't think of it, I'll move on. Item fourteen, payment of the bills, which you have in front of you. Do I hear a motion for the payment of these bills?
I move to approve the payment of the bills as presented in the amount of five hundred thirty-three thousand, one hundred sixty-five dollars and sixty-six cents.
You're here, second.
Second.
Lady and gentlemen, any discussion? All the questions, the vote, all in favor of the bills as presented? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close like sign, motion carries. Item fifteen, financial report, this is Goffey.
In natural response. Good evening. You have before you the financial report for the first half of the fiscal year up to December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen. This financial report is very important, because this tells us how much income we have going forward, and kind of sets our tone for the last half of the year, whether or not we can do our capital projects that we can budget for in looking to the future. And it also shows us where we are, you know, as far as operating, if we're going to get job, or if we're, you know, need to cut back in places. Before I start, I want to make a statement that we need to take into consideration every time you're looking at this budget report, is we have budgeted to spend reserves. So we budgeted to spend your reserves, and that we knew that we had going forward. So with that being said, take that into consideration when you're looking at the budget comparisons. Do you all want to start with the general fund budgets? The general fund budget, if you look at the operating revenues, which, like I said, is very important, we have a rate of only twenty-nine-six percent, which means we're red on target. But if they access the one percent that we have in difference here, and our operating revenues up to this point, versus it's been adjusted to taking consideration taxes that are coming in kind of here, but, so we're saying everything comes in on a regular basis and quarterly basis, for example, payroll taxes and the profits, is all coming in red as budgeted and not over. This is made up by, of course, the operating expenses, which of the staff is going to be the portion of the bill missed, which, you know, we always fight the problem of being fully staffed in the department, and so that takes into consideration, because we budgeted for fully staffed departments in that situation. We are red on target where we thought we should be this year, as far as going forward, it says that going forward, we should be able to accomplish our budget as said before. But as y'all know from our retreat, that we have a lot of upcoming projects coming forward that are going to need a lot of attention, and we don't have extra money coming in, as you can see, to accommodate a lot of extra items. Municipal aid, municipal aid is red on target. Again, we gave money for a mountain state, which was cut, so we decided, we decided to supplement that from the general fund this year, about sixty-five thousand dollars, like as we did last year. We normally do two, pay the list one in the spring, one in the fall. We've done the fall, we will do spring coming up of around two hundred thousand dollars apiece, to continue to get our roads, to keep the roads in high maintenance. The stormwater fund is red on schedule also. It's two point three-nine percent under budgeting revenues, but made up by operating expenses of thirty-eight percent favorable budget. The stormwater fund, as of right now, we are only doing small projects. We have not budgeted to do any large projects. We borrow money to do those. We did have strand, and we did anything contracted to do, to map out some of these projects that come out, I think we'll talk about later on. The garbage fund, it is red at budget, on both sides, that goes a little bit. This is also supplemented by the general fund, very next show, so just take into consideration that every time we, you know, go under budget or above budget, you know, that affects your general fund also for the following year. The utility fund is two point six-six percent under budgeting revenues. This has been a very wet year, which affects that so far. We're in the process of doing a sewer rate study that will come through you in the next few months. They have done a wonderful job of cutting expenses so far. It's just they had about thirteen point nine-eight percent going forward in order to keep that fund in health. Overall, your parking fund is red on budget on revenues and has favorable budget also on operating expenses. We are looking at repairs for the parking garage, and will also be included in the twenty-second meeting when we talk about the energy audit. As a conclusion, we are under budget in revenues for the first half of the year by point five-nine percent, which is less than a percent that we made that at far when our operating budget's a twelve point seven-five percent favorable budget, to stay as a whole. This tells us that going forward, we're red on budget, and we can finish out our budget here as planned.
Any questions or comments?
How much are you talking about when you talk about spending our reserves?
We budgeted to spend reserves. We, in the different funds, we budgeted with different amounts to spend in the reserves. Utility fund, we budgeted to spend all our reserves that we were allowed to spend, and our, our general fund, we budgeted to spend most of them, and we're talking seven million dollars of reserves that we're spending. That's not an exact number that I can.
Right. Thank you.
So, so Michelle, we do that this year, and let's say that income projections stay flat for the next year.
If we don't save money through our operating budgets, then we don't have money to do capital unless we borrow. If we save money in our operations, then we can use that money for following year, which is what we've been doing, as a reserve to, to buy capital. If not, we have to borrow to buy capital, and that puts a big surplus on us.
And our limit per year on borrowing is?
Make it qualify borrowing, it's two more, make it qualify.
So we could possibly be looking at having no reserves and maxed, maxed out borrowing?
Red was, we did keep our required reserves, about one inch, which is ten percent of our operating expenses plus debt service, which is, you know, about average, usually kind of a quarter, which we had the debt service on, that makes it that five percent.
Any other comments?
I just wanted to give some numbers and some.
If I could have a moment, the executive privilege and backing up just for comment, because the public doesn't know that we spent seven hours a week ago, this past Friday, in the City Commission retreat, I want to thank the staff for all of their work and input, and I want the public to at least know from our perspective that this staff and this commission are not afraid to look at some hard truths going forward, and we've got, we've got some very daunting tasks in front of us. And, and I just want to make sure that that is understood, and I want to thank the commission for their valuable time for basically holding up. Thank you. Moving right along to item sixteen, Resolution twenty seventeen oh-two thirteen oh-five, this is the Fire Station Engineer Contract Agreement. Mr. Coffey, you have the next three items.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner. You have in front of you the resolution authorizing the acceptance of the agreement provided by Brubiera for the work tied to the downtown fire station across the street. The initial phase, which is outlined, is twenty-seven thousand, four hundred dollars to establish a proposed plan for the fire station, for downtown station, and then it provides for transitioning to design, a contract administration contract, typical for an architect.
You're here, motion?
I move to accept Resolution number twenty seventeen oh-two thirteen oh-five.
Thank you, Commissioner Serres. Is there a second? Commissioner Terry, you're in discussion, if there is any?
One of those capital projects that we cannot delay much, if any, longer, which goes back to the budget discussion that we just had.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, Sheriff, call the questions for the vote. All in favor of Resolution twenty seventeen dash oh-two dash thirteen dash oh-five? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close like sign, motion carries. Item seventeen is Resolution twenty seventeen dash oh-two dash thirteen dash oh-six. This is the wastewater plant engineer contract agreement.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. You have in front of you the resolution, which accepts a contract provided by H D R in response to the request for proposals that we submitted sometime back in December. The contract in front of you details their work that is very similar to the Water System Master Plan study that we did in the two thousand and seven era, where we evaluated the system capacity, the system demand, as well as the existing facilities, the condition of those, and the expected life cycle of those by an outside third-party, not staff. We, the last study we did was about nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand, which was the last time the wastewater plant was upgraded. This plan now has been fully executed, with the exception of some minor work. We have, we will then take that, that plan, begin with that, and modernize it, and then that will guide our wastewater collection department for foreseeable future, as well as our capital plan in the wastewater side. The value of this contract is fifty-eight thousand, five hundred. However, we would say that their actual proposal was roughly forty-three thousand, five hundred. There is fifteen thousand dollars in the contract that will not be spent unless the city authorizes additional services, which we have done that, where a study in this way occurs, partly because we don't know what we get into if we go talk to the Division of Water. There may be a separate report that is above and beyond what we have conceded in this study, and this makes for an efficient way to transition into the production of that document.
You're here, motion?
I move to approve Resolution twenty seventeen oh-two thirteen oh-six.
Thank you, ma'am. You're here, second.
Second.
Sir, we are in discussion.
So the last update is now seventeen years old?
Uh, yes, and that is, that we are, the plant was upgraded in ninety-eight, ninety-nine, and we subsequently did a capacity plan. G R W was engineer on that, which basically has guided us to this point. We want to be in a position that we can make an effective recommendation on the wastewater plant prior to twenty eighteen, which is your twenty-year expected life of the last improvements of the wastewater plant. So whether or not we make it twenty-two years, or twenty-five years, or if we make it twenty years, we don't know that, but we want to be prepared for that in the event that something happens. This is preparation for, for the future work that is currently undefined at the wastewater plant.
So this is, this would allow for more capacity?
That is the plan, yes. That is what our concern is. The study will verify what capacity would be needed.
Is this kind of working in tandem with expanding the capacity of the water plant? Therefore, you have to kind of allow on the other end?
Uh, no, ma'am, not entirely. The, this, this will be, the service area for the wastewater plant is different than that of the water plant, so therefore their capacities will be different.
Is our wastewater only city?
We provide central service to the city of Carroll. We have a wastewater plant there that we own. We talked about that before. We provide central service to the airport, on Airport Road in Junction City, as well as all of Junction City, and the corridor that is one twenty-seven north of Junction City. We provide treatment services and will provide treatment services for North Point Training Center, for the area north of North Point Training Center into Mercer County. City of Bergen currently is completing their initial phases of their collection system project, where we will handle that flow, as well as the Lincoln County Sanitation District to the south in Houstonville. We will handle that flow as well.
If I can add something, this is also in conjunction with the loans that is on progress with that. We will pay off our last sewer upgrade in twenty twenty. So this is totally in line with what was supposed to happen.
Okay. And also, is this included in our energy audit?
The facility, we initially made an effort to include it. What we felt like was the recommendations that came from the, the energy consultant really got outside of what we thought were eligible expenses for that, that contract delivery method, and so therefore we've gone down a separate path for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further comments?
I think you made some, some good questions there, Commissioner Terry, and it does kind of say to our community, what kind of a footprint Danville has in terms of providing water and waste treatment. We cover a pretty good-sized region.
In the water business. Any further comments? Seeing none, Sheriff, call the question, and vote all in favor of Resolution twenty seventeen oh-two thirteen oh-six? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close like sign, motion carries. Continuing on, Mr. Coffey, with Resolution twenty seventeen oh-two thirteen oh-seven.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner.
About the Master Park Engineer Contract.
Thank you, sir. The resolution in front of you authorizes the execution of the attached agreement with Grand State of Carroll, completing what, what is called a revised Parks and Recreation Master Plan. The compensation in the contract is for fifty thousand dollars to perform the services identified in the contract, which will include, but not be limited to, evaluation of all the city's recreational and parks facilities, a review of the physical infrastructure, a review of the inventory, review of the programming that we provide through those facilities, and then it will include quite a bit of work and analysis of information that we gather through public survey, the pursuit of public feedback in terms of what, what are the expectations of our community, overlaid, of course, against what are the, what we would say are the industry standards as, as described by these folks who have, do business all over the United States. And, and so the idea there is that our Parks and Recreation Program would then be on par with the community our size, meeting the expectations of the community that are using these facilities.
You're here, motion?
I would actually ask respectfully, ask Commissioner Terry and Mayor Paris if we can table this, as our partners digested over at the Boyle Physical Court. I think that you have done a great job in, in getting this down from what we budgeted for it, and it's a great price, but I think I want them on board as we go forward, because we've put so much work into working together, and at this point, they want to take it before their magistrates. After we had an ad hoc meeting this morning, they were a little bit resistive, but certainly couldn't make any decision, any kind of decision to spend the twenty-five thousand dollars and be part of this, so I'm asking to table it, if we can do that.
That's your motion?
Yes, sir.
You have a motion to table this for how many days? You have a motion to table this for how many days?
I think until next month. They've had a chance to have their meeting tomorrow, and, um, we will go back to, well, I don't think ad hoc committee needs to be involved at all, so, um...
Now, they probably won't have it on their agenda tomorrow.
Correct. Yeah, that's what we were told. Yep.
That they would not.
Pardon me?
That they would not have it on their agenda.
If it had not been for the ad hoc committee, correct?
It's not on the agenda for tomorrow, is it?
Oh, it is not.
I, I doubt that seriously.
Okay. I'd like to wait two meetings and have the other two commissioners back and have them time to digest it and go into this project together. Um, otherwise, if we go in alone, which is not a bad idea, but, uh, I think that, uh, we're showing some division in, in the unity we've built up already, so I don't want to, I don't want to jeopardize that.
We should just, um, note too, for the record, that it is possible, feasible, manageable even, to, if you choose to proceed, um, generally what we've done before on certain things is we act and then we ask for participation, um, and then you're in a position to go forward if the county decides they do not want to participate. Should you choose to take this matter up tonight, it wouldn't prevent the county from participating, um, with you, as it has been a matter of public discussion for quite some time. Um, I'm just noting that for you as a point of information, that if you take it, if you act on it tonight, it's saying proceed, you can still ask the county to participate. It's not saying you have to go alone.
Um, Robert's rules of order dictate that we have a motion and we need a second before we have any further conversation.
I don't want to second that, sorry. I don't want to second that.
Well, I'll second it, just, just so we can continue to have a conversation.
Okay.
Um, uh, and, and Ron, you need to be part of this conversation as well. Um, Earl, my, my comments can kind of be summed up by your verbiage. You referred to the city's parks, et cetera, but, but we have a joint committee. It's, it's, it's joint parks and rec, city and county. And, um, while I understand what we, that we not only want to do, we need to do, um, I struggle with a joint committee where one partner wants to go ahead and do something that needs to be done, and the other partner doesn't. And, and it would certainly be nice if our, if our, if our partner, um, would, would move along with us, because we have this obligation. jointly we have an obligation, and it's been twenty years almost since we had a master plan. Um, and, and tastes change, times change, um, recreation changes. I mean, who would have ever thought five years ago we'd have trails like we have today? Um, who, who would have ever thought five years ago that football, um, would be somewhat on the decline, and lacrosse would be coming on the up? So these things change in addition to, um, the, the elephant in the room, which is the Bunny Davis Center, and, 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 and water recreation. So, um, you know, I, I, I struggle with, um, I struggle with us wanting to move forward responsibly, and, and, and our, and our partner doesn't. Um, so that, that's why I say it, so we can have that discussion. Mr. Scott, you're, you're full of yours.
Let me just add a couple of comments. Um, it, it's been over twenty years since we've had a Millennium Park master plan. It's been over thirty years since we've had a City of Danville, uh, master, uh, parks plan. So you've got, uh, one generation and their children that have really, uh, not had the benefits of an updated recreational program. The, uh, idea of hiring a consultant has been in the city's budget for two years, and for each of those two years preceding this point in conversation, I have had conversation with fiscal court executive and some members of fiscal court regarding their, um, interest or support of hiring a consultant to help guide us in making the, uh, correct or, or priority decisions for our community, uh, in the, uh, future. Uh, I've not had a positive response as a result of those conversations in prior years, uh, and maybe I didn't do a good enough job in terms of communicating the benefits that would be derived from such a study. But the study is intended to use nationally recognized consultants to develop a vision, goals and objectives, and identify spending priorities that face our city and county in parks and recreation. Uh, I get the fact, as well as the county does, that city and county revenues are limited, and that we, uh, need to make wise choices in the expenditure of our funds. That's specifically the reason why we're asking for someone to help, um, gather the collective thoughts of our residents, city and county, to say, how are we doing? Uh, what are your expectations? How are we going to go about prioritizing those to make the best use of the limited dollars that we have? And the discussion we had this morning, uh, in terms of, uh, trying to, um, make capital expenditures to, um, to address deficiencies in the past was as good as far as it goes, but it's only remedial efforts, and it doesn't address the essential question, are we doing the right thing for the future of our community in terms of big dollar expenditures? Uh, and that requires a little bit of investment. It doesn't necessarily mean that we can't continue to find money to make the capital improvements that we have identified through that very good cooperative effort, uh, in the ad hoc committee, but it's essentially the question, do we need to step back and do a little bit of a big picture thinking as a community, uh, as we, uh, enter into a service, uh, parks and recreation, to take note of all the new developments that are occurring and the needs and desires of our residents? Uh, simply to keep on doing what we have been doing probably is going to get us the answer that we need to get to.
And, and I don't think anybody would take exception up here to anything you say. I, I think, um, I think if I hear Commissioner Cyrus correctly, um, you'd like to give them an opportunity, and I'll even further that if you think it's, if, if you think it's a good idea. Um, I'd like to ask that it be put on the fiscal court agenda, and I'd like for myself and anybody else to go, go make a, go make an ask to the fiscal court, if, if that's appropriate.
Well, it, it may be just a final comment. I mean, we've talked in numerous settings and maybe even here, uh, in this division room in prior, uh, meetings about the, uh, benefits of a, uh, well-funded and well-structured and well-delivered parks and recreation program. It's, it's great for economic development, for corporations that are coming in. It, it, we know for quite a number of years now that our thirty-year-old plus obsolete swimming pool is going to fail catastrophically one day, and this is trying to get ahead of that question so that we might attract grants or have a documentation as to sizing what our community needs are. Uh, and this is simply a proactive effort to gather information so that we can make a future decision. Uh, it doesn't mean that we're committed to anything that comes out of this. It's simply saying let's take the wise approach of using experts and the ideas of all the people, uh, in our community and the opinions of residents to get our arms around where we need to go with this issue. And I, I'm hopeful, uh, that despite my failing to get consensus from the fiscal court in the past two years, that the mayor and the city commission, with its emphasis now on moving ahead with this, may get the attention required to help direct and move this in a progressive and timely way. Uh, waiting two more years, in my opinion, is a mistake.
I totally agree with you, and, 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 and I can't speak for everybody, but I'd be interested to say they would agree with you as well. But I think what Christian Cyrus is asking for is...
Not, not two years. Uh, I'm totally for this plan. I think, uh, you two gentlemen were at the ad hoc committee meeting this morning. What I did sense, and, and Mayor Paris is the one that kind of set it up, is there was a very, uh, large resistance to going forward and participating, but then, um, they kind of changed when, uh, they said they wanted to make sure that we fixed things that need to be fixed, and then we could go forward, and so Mayor Paris had asked that that show up the next ad hoc committee meeting, uh, that Parks and Rec, um, give us that, and then we could go forward. So, um, I'm going to go for the plan either way. I just want to say that I think that if we have partners at Stanville Boyle County Parks and Rec, we should give them that opportunity to say yes, otherwise we'll just move forward.
Well, we've given them at least two years to say yes.
Well, go ahead, I'm sorry.
And probably realistically five years, because it was probably in discussion before it was actually put into our budget. And, but, we have a partnership with another entity that has a different philosophy, and I think it was Mr. Dexter, actually, that made that quite clear to me. Um, because these are services that the city is obligated to provide, and the county does not have that philosophy, so to speak, and, and Mr. Dexter can put it, uh, better if he wants to jump in here at any time. But, um, is it the feeling, do, do the other two of you feel that the city or the county was maybe becoming more open to it?
That's the exact reason I asked to table it, and it's not for two years, definitely not. But probably until, um, the net, after the next ad hoc committee, because that's where I'm supposed to get feedback from John Drake and Roger Ross at Parks and Rec on what immediate needs are. They're being, they're being very physically conservative at, uh, over there at the court, and that they should be, and so should we, and we are, but we also need to look forward. We need to look down the path. Um, so I think I truly had a sense that they're sort of listening and thinking about it. We had a lot of good dialogue, I thought, this morning.
So the next ad hoc meeting is on the thirteenth of March. It's Monday, and it's before the city commission meeting.
Which is before the county meeting, fiscal court meeting?
Or fiscal court as well.
Right, right. Um, and our next meeting after that would be on the twenty-seventh. Um, I think, I think if, um, I think one of the operational differences is that our city manager does a great job of taking whatever topics are brought to his attention and sharing that with us. Um, as far as I know, this particular topic has never been brought to the full fiscal court, and I think that may be a difference. I think that there's, there's needed input here. Is that fair to say?
I think that's fair to say, um, at the full fiscal court. Also, I, I, I think we should be mindful that it's not necessarily mutually exclusive, that we would be able to make some additional capital improvements in our park, as we have been doing, and also move forward with the study. What I'm really hearing is we need to identify those additional steps for capital improvements, and if they are not such major ones, that would be perhaps changed by the study's outcome, uh, that we, we make those capital improvements or agree city and county to do, to do so. But, uh, there's nothing, uh, it, you know, to prevent the city from look further down the road, and there's nothing to prevent the county from also joining in that, uh, and participating in that as well. And so I, I'm, I'm hopeful that they will.
It's hard for me to believe that in, in, in the grand scheme of things, we're, we're talking about twenty-eight thousand dollars, twenty-nine thousand dollars, right? Half of fifty-eight?
Fifty, fifty.
Half of fifty? So we're talking twenty-five thousand dollars. Yeah, it's hard for me to believe that the fiscal court can't find twenty-five thousand dollars to do this. So you take the word can out of this situation, put in the word want, and that's what I think we have to find out.
Well, and that goes back to philosophies and the, and mindsets, and I had an aha moment back in the fall when I went to the K L C, um, conference, and one of the sessions that I took, and I believe Donna was in that one with me, was planning beyond term limits, and, you know, we have to think fifty and sometimes even a hundred years down the road, and that's a, that's a really difficult thing to wrap your brain around and to think that way, and I think this commission, maybe even for the first time ever with a city commission, does have that philosophy, because the, the one thing that that man said in that session was it's not about now, and it's not about us, and it never is, and that is so true, and that, that's something that keeps ringing into my mind, and again, it comes back to, to philosophies. Um, I'm okay with tabling this to what, the second meeting of next month?
That would be...
But beyond that, it doesn't need to be delayed very much at all. It's already, I mean, this should have been done ten years ago.
You have no argument. For me, you know, the only reason I brought it up is that I, I see some unity starting to develop, and I don't want to stop that momentum.
We have a motion and a second. No, I second it.
May, may I interrupt something real quick and just say this? It, it may be necessary for some of the preliminary work that we were going to do in-house to begin, um, and that includes some public surveys, some public data gathering, because of the timing of the school system and, and whatnot, and I fear that if we wait till then, you'll miss your window to gather some of that information efficiently, cost-effectively. And so we, unless directed otherwise, that, that it is separate and apart from the work Grand State of Carroll will do and not included in their contract, uh, we may begin that effort unless you all say not to. Uh, and that's pure public, it's public information gathering, it's not a public meeting, it's none of that. It's, it's surveys, and it's online surveys and things like that, uh, along those lines.
I'm, I'm okay with that. It, we're not saying we're not going to do it.
Right.
We just want to give the county every opportunity to have their input.
And that's why I say that. That's the reason I'm asking that question.
Want to give the county every opportunity to be a partner.
And...
And I want to applaud Mr. Scott for, um, broaching this subject and seeing the need for it and addressing the need for it three years ago. Thank you, sir.
I'd also like to, um, just point out to the commission that should you have a desire for the mayor to make that request to the court himself, then you should probably authorize him by motion to do so for the body.
So we need to deal with this motion first?
Deal with the motion to table, and then you can entertain a second motion to have the mayor make a request to the court to participate in the study, um, and to initiate those discussions, um, necessary to get on, uh, an agenda that is probably this month or first of April, March.
Okay, so we'll deal with, with this motion and second. Any further conversation? Seeing none, Chair, we call the question. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Would anyone like to make a motion as to who would like to approach fiscal court?
I, I move that, uh, the mayor, Mayor Paris, has to be, um, have that place on the agenda for, for fiscal court. Yep. Actually, uh, probably sooner the better, next meeting.
Is that good enough?
Sir, second?
Second. I wanted to make sure we worded it right.
That works.
Does, does the mayor have, have discretion to add people to, to that presentation?
Uh, that's fine. Uh, we just want to make sure that in order, as we focus on our retreat, you know, the mayor being but one commissioner, and you, as you speak as a body, it's important that there be an authorized, um, spokesperson, but it's fine if others, if you bring others along that wish to comment, and the city manager, I'm sure, would like to be in attendance with you at that meeting as well.
Any more? Any further conversation? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item nineteen is Linda Avenue Culvert Replacement Project. Mr. Byerly?
I'm Byerly with the Public Works Department. When Michelle did her presentation tonight, she was talking about some of the small projects that were done under stormwater and this certainly falls under that category. This is a culvert replacement that was constructed on Linda Avenue in the Dexter Court subdivision. And I wanted to pass out these photographs.
You remind us where Linda Avenue is?
Linda Avenue is on the north side of town off of Old Shaker Town Road. And it's in a subdivision that's probably 50 to 60 years old called the Dexter Court subdivision. Last year, we were notified by a homeowner that lives on Linda Avenue that there had a, that a hole had come in their yard. And we had, we reviewed this, we discovered that the 24-inch metal culvert that was under the road and over on their yard had rusted through and that soil was being able to pass through the opening in the pipe. As we reviewed this, our plan was to replace the pipe with a, replace the corrugated metal pipe with reinforced concrete pipe. And also to install new head walls or end treatments on that pipe for safety reasons and for hydraulic reasons. As the end treatments tied into the existing open channel. It has been our practice to put concrete pipe under roadways in the name of as much as possible. The other concern about this application was the height of the pipe or the depth of the pipe under the road was a concern for both strength and safety because of cars driving off the road. So in this particular application, we wanted to install guard rail to bring it up to state specifications. The project included signage and traffic control along the road. And also, we did a press release notifying the school system and the emergency system of the construction. It also included the demolition of the existing system and removal. We had to work with the property owners on relocation of some of the landscaping in their yards and also the mailboxes. Then we installed the new reinforced concrete pipes and head walls. And then we also included installation of erosion control, which we used in this case as you can see in that photograph, channel lining rock was put on there. And then we had the new guard rail system installed here recently. This project was completed about three or four weeks ago. It was actually started in probably October. We had very little downtime as far as the road goes out there or any traffic problems. The total cost of this project was about $18,000 and that was taken out of the stormwater fund. And wanted to bring this to you and show you what a typical small project would be. We try to do two or three of these smaller drainage projects each year and we have plans for several this year. So I'll answer any questions about this project or any of the other ones that you all might have.
Any questions? Thank you, Donna. Moving to public safety, item 20, Resolution 2017-02-13-08. And this is in regard to the 2017 Kentucky Homeland Security Grant Application. Who's handling that? There you are.
That is, that is asking to apply for a grant from the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security in the amount of $15,000. And that will be for emergency medical and rescue training supplies.
Do I hear a motion?
I move to accept Resolution number 2017-02-13-08.
Second.
Motion is made by Commissioner Sears, second by Commissioner Terry. Is there any discussion? You sure this isn't for you all to get new pots and pans and for your kitchen and all that up there?
You're giving our secrets away, sir.
I was going to ask what this was for. Is it specific or?
Just for emergency medical training supplies and also rescue training supplies. Be for like mannequins, that type of thing that we train. Which can run, can get quite expensive.
Any further questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll call them. Question for the vote, all in favor of Resolution 2017-02-13-08 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close like sign, motion carries. Resolution 2017-02-13-09, the SCBA bid award. Again, Mr. Brumfield, continue on.
This is to award Vogelpool fire equipment, the bid award for, to replace and upgrade our SCBA, our self-containment, our breathing apparatus and also our respiratory compliance program. But it's to award a bid to them for $262,224. They were the sole bidder in this. There's only two in the state that sell this equipment and they were the only ones that bid on it.
Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 2017-02-13-09.
Commissioner Terry, is there a second? Commissioner Sears?
Second.
Why do you think that they're, you only got one bid?
I don't know. I haven't had a chance to speak with the other providers in this and I don't know why they didn't bid on it. They had helped us. We've been doing research and development on this for the past year and a half and the other company has helped us some with that, so I'm not sure why they didn't bid on it.
I think the bid price was a competitive bid based upon our projections and the capital expenditures though. So it was not an unreasonable bid.
Can't imagine, being in competition, I got 50/50 chance of winning, but I got 100% chance of losing if I don't bid.
We scratched our heads at that ourselves, I don't know why.
What is this equipment again?
It's our breathing apparatus that we wear. It's for the breathing apparatus, cylinders and also confined space rescue air lines and just to be in compliance with the respiratory program.
But you're comfortable getting equipment from this company?
Oh, absolutely, yes. We have done business with them in the past.
Any further questions or comments?
Expensive stuff.
Worth it.
How often do you have to do this?
Every 10 years. And it just depends, you know, some of it gets used more than others, but it has a 10-year lifespan on it.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, chair will call a question. All in favor of Resolution 2017-02-13-09? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close like sign, motion carries. We'll move into legal now, Resolution 2017-02-13-10. This is in regard to an easement. Counselor Dexter, lead the way.
Thank you, Mayor. The request before you pertains to property that's owned by Dane Burris on Roy Arnold Boulevard. And you can see by some of the documentation attached that there, the city possesses a stormwater utility easement. There's a pipe that's in the ground there. And Mr. Burris has a proposed development of a warehouse for the property. And in order to achieve that desired end, he has requested through his engineer, which is Kendall Wise with Vintage Engineering, that the city relocate its easement. And so basically, it's moving it to an eastern, easterly direction that will more closely correspond with that boundary of his property and give him more efficient use of it. The city engineer has reviewed the request and concurs that it doesn't impact the city in any negative manner. And so the resolution before you would propose abandoning the city's current easement in exchange for a replacement easement, authorizes the mayor and city engineer to sign all documents necessary to effectuate that end.
Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 2017-02-13-10.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. We're in discussion?
Is there a cost on this?
Yeah.
The engineering costs are borne solely by Mr. Burris and the city will not incur any cost in it as well. The recording fees for the release, for instance, will be recorded or paid for by Mr. Burris.
But the cost to move it?
Well, the pipe actually is not going to be utilized anymore. They're switching to a different format. It's going to be a lagoon. I mean, Earl can speak to that more effectively than I can, but the proposal states that it's going to be more like a drainage area and not going to be a new pipe.
They'll build a water quality basin adjacent to the building as shown on the, as outlined by the easement. All worked out of that basin. Also, the installation of the new pipe directing the discharge from the street into that basin will be done by Mr. Burris. And then that basin will discharge into the existing storm source. So in essence, the pipe is replaced by pipe and basin. Pipe, basin, pipe, I guess.
So again, who pays for that?
Mr. Burris.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, chair will call a question. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close like sign, motion carries. Item 23, Municipal Order Number 02-13-01-2017. This is the code enforcement flow chart. Again, Counselor Dexter.
Thank you, Mayor. As a point of review, as this commission has looked at code enforcement processes over the past two years and reviewed several different options in light of the House Bill 22 that was passed in 2016 by the General Assembly. You asked staff to come up with an effective and efficient code enforcement process. And what we suggested to you some months ago was a three-pronged approach. One being having a monthly code update that shows complaints, how they're being addressed and also the activity of the code enforcement department. You have seen that the past couple months and Bridgette again showed you January's report today. That was the first prong to help increase communication and transparency in the department. The second prong was this municipal order that is in front of you. It was to clearly articulate and define what process is used by the codes department in receiving complaints, addressing them or addressing what they view in the field. So what this municipal order does is it adopts the process that is articulated by codes that they follow to show you and the public how complaints and abandoning neglected properties are in fact addressed.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to accept Municipal Order Number 02-13-01-2017.
Sir, is there a second?
Second.
Ma'am, we're in discussion?
I like this flow chart you put together. It seemed like we had some discussion and you can help me out here with terminology, but some recourse for the violator to air their issue against the city? Where do we go with that?
We are going to address that in actually the ordinance that is coming up in the next section. So this, this order just, municipal orders are used to direct staff how to act. So it doesn't, if it affects actions of citizens or rights of citizens, that has to be done by ordinance. So we use municipal orders when we're just directing the actions of staff.
Yes, sir, Mr. Scott.
I do have one question just for clarification, Steve, Stephen. This flow chart shows that if violations are found, the violator has 90 days to repair or raise the problem. And if compliance is not met, it's, the district court has a preliminary hearing on the matter. I guess I'm seeking clarification with regard to the expected timeline.
Thank you, that's my question, thank you.
Of how this will flow. I mean, if we have or see a circumstance that warrants a report being issued, the initial notice being issued and the individual does not satisfy the condition, what is the length of time that we may anticipate in terms of following the 90-day failure to correct? In other words, are we likely to have prompt consideration by district court or do we know?
It could be considered by the court promptly if it's brought promptly. So when I say promptly, I mean, a court would hear the request within 30 days of the request. But city staff has to make that request for it to be heard. So if, if an order is given by staff, I mean, if you're looking at the bottom of page one, it says it's compliance not met, the criminal summons issued, then they can ask for preliminary hearing. I mean, you could insert a time period there for a direction of staff to take it to the district court in a certain amount of time if you wanted to revise the flow chart, so to speak.
Yeah, I'd like to see that within a week.
Well, that may not always be possible, although desirable given circumstances and other workloads and so forth. My real question was, and I think Mr. Dexter answered that, if we request district court to schedule it, is it likely that that will be promptly scheduled or is there?
Yes, that is, that is likely that it will be scheduled within 30 days.
Well, let me ask you, Stephen, we've got a complaint received, we've got it recorded and we've got an officer going out. So from the time that the complaint is received to the time the officer goes out, how many days is that?
It's not specified on the flow chart.
Needs to be specified.
And are you asking that it be seven days instead of 90 days?
No.
On down?
No, on down, after 90 days if they still have not complied.
Okay.
I would like the city to take as immediate action as possible to get it forward to court.
Okay. And then, so the notice of violation to property owner to repair or raise the property, does that mean that the officer has discretion on whether it needs to be raised? I mean, and we're talking raised as in torn down?
That's correct. Again, I wanted to just note, this scheduled flow chart is for blighted or abandoned properties. So this isn't for necessary a nuisance lane. This is more structural problems, where there's more imminent threat of danger or in a, it's not habitable or things of that nature. I hear your concern about putting in timeframes on staff and I think in order to do that, what might be the best approach is after staff has heard those requests, that they can come back to you at your next meeting with some days inserted in the staff to says how many, what's reasonable for them to respond to a complaint that they don't initiate on their own, for instance.
And I want to, my concept here is to tighten this up as much as possible. So you don't hear Joe Smith out there saying, well, look, how come he got more leniency than I got? I want a tight process so that it's defendable.
Oh, that's, I mean, that's a good point.
That's what I want.
I think it, there's clear expectation certainly if we have dates on which, or a timeframe on which staff should respond. I agree.
Now, I'm going to follow up on Commissioner Terry's comment. Because I think I know where she's going. You know, one man's trash is another man's treasure. And if, I've done two historic rehabs and I was advised on both of them to tear them down before you do anything because they're going to fall in. Nothing could be further from the truth. So I think, I think we need something that says that, that there's some structural analysis that occurs as opposed to somebody's opinion.
One person's opinion.
Right.
We have, through the city's adoption of the Property Maintenance Code, which the city adheres to, that sets city adheres to, that sets certain standards of what determines a building is needs to be condemned. And there is some discretion that's given to a code enforcement officer in making that determination. But I I warn you against placing the burden on the city to prove the structural integrity of a building. The code places the burden on the homeowner. So if the city has valid concerns, what the law says is if you disagree with us or the officer's informed opinion based on the code, then the burden is on you, the property owner, to prove that it's compliant.
Okay, so if I want to demolish my building at the corner of Third and Main, walk me through that procedure.
If you want to?
Yeah, walk me through that procedure.
Well, you're in a historic district, so you can't touch your building, the facade of it in a way that does not meet the design guidelines adopted by the city.
I want to tear it down.
You can't do that.
Absolutely, I can do that.
You cannot.
What happens if that building becomes vacant and?
And blighted?
Blighted.
Well, in a historic district, first of all, if you want to do it as a property owner, you cannot do it. The city, however, if there are properties that are in imminent danger and the the city determines that the public's it's in the public's interest and safety due to imminent danger, they can be demolished. Period. At the discretion of the city.
Right, but this reads the discretion of
The code.
The code enforcement officer.
Right.
Or at least that's the way I read it.
Oh, okay. Oh, I see where you are now.
Or would the code enforcement officer bring that before us?
No, they don't.
See, that's where I had the hangup, was it's the discretion of the officer.
But they don't bring violations to you. So and there's no distinction whether it's in order to comply with, you know, mowing the yard or removing debris or fixing a roof or if it's dilapidated to raise it. So that I will say this from staff's standpoint, they do not make that determine. That's not the first thing they they go to demolition. They start with there's a notice of a violation and in order to correct it, in their mind, there's a list of things to do and a time period is given for them to comply. And staff uses their discretion to do that. Either the building gets better or it doesn't. And so and the property code outlines is that you don't start with demolition. You start with issuing notices of violation for the problems that need to be corrected. And if the property if those that list of items are corrected, then there isn't a condemnation order or there's not an order to raise. I will say this, a property is placed on the condemnation list prior to it being raised. And you see what's condemned. I mean, we have properties that are condemned for a substantial period of time. And in order to raise the structure, what we typically have to do is seek quotes or bids and you see those. So although you're not in the flow chart, so to speak, the city doesn't have a line item budget for raising structures. So as a practical point, the city manager brings those to your attention when staff has some action that they believe needs to be taken. And you prioritize them or you don't. But it's important for the officers to have discretion in what orders to issue.
Okay. I just don't want our codes officers out here issuing orders to tear down a bunch of houses. When that's not always the solution. Sometimes it has to be, but.
It will it will become a matter of public policy for the city commission to agree in the proposed budget coming up, how much we will set aside for demolition costs to be borne by the city in these instances. So that is a total sort of appropriations control on that or allocation of resources, depending on how you look at it.
And I guess this is this is designed to prevent the properties being on the condemnation list for 30 years.
That's right. That's right. And it's also a point to say to the public, this is our process. We've had our process now is known, you have to read the property maintenance code and you have to to learn and feel how that works. This is just a 40,000-foot view. It's not meant to be indicative of every situation, but it's going to say as a general rule of thumb, this is the process. You know, they make those flow charts you see of how a bill becomes law in Congress. It's in nice orderly little boxes and it looks good and it seems like it makes a lot of sense. Well, you know, that generally is not the way it happens. I mean, in theory, it could, but there's a lot of outside influences that play roles in the flow chart.
Lots of exceptions.
Sure.
Oh, precisely, this flow chart doesn't document the multiple phone calls between the code enforcement officer and the property owner in terms of you said, what, and I did this, is that adequate? No, it's not, and you need to do this and those type of things.
That's right.
So Mayor, are you asking that when the complaint is received and between the code officer being on site for inspection, that that's say 24 hours, one business day a week?
I'm open. I just think it needs to be defined and accepted.
Sure. And that I think that is where it would be nice to get actually code enforcement staff ideas on what they think is reasonable and then let them consult with the city manager and bring that back to you on what's a what's a reasonable timeframe of responding to complaints.
That's logical.
And then the other time maybe we want to place into the chart is if no progress is made, when is staff going to request that that action to the to the court? And again, this is on the criminal side. We're going to look at an ordinance and amendments on the civil side. So this is for a criminal penalty.
But you need to take this back and?
I think staff has heard your concerns and they will bring a revised flow chart so we can pass over it and consider it next time, if that's okay.
So.
There was a motion and a second. So that was.
Do we need to remove that?
I think we need to vote that down.
Or Ms. Terry, you can remove your second and.
Either way, does it matter?
I just prefer you remove your second, move your first one, take it off the table instead of voting it down.
Okay, I'll remove my second.
Second has been moved. Motion dies for lack of a second. Item 24 is draft ordinance 1891. Proceed, Mr. Dexter.
Thank you. And the third prong of the of the three-legged approach comes in this this ordinance. You remember that House Bill 422 allowed cities to create code enforcement boards and it also consolidated a lot of different areas of code enforcement into a single chapter, which was a beneficial tool for cities in the Commonwealth. Through many discussions with the commission in special sessions and workshops, we determined, actually you determined that you did not want to create a code enforcement board but would rather implement a system of empowering code enforcement officers to issue violations, citations, that are accompanied with civil fines. Meaning if some now, for instance, if someone doesn't mow their yard, the city's sole remedy is to go mow it and place a lien on the property for what it costs. So cost $100, they put place lien on the property for $100, hope to collect it. This ordinance will allow staff to fine someone, also abate the nuisance, and charge them for both. So it adds strength to the code enforcement process by allowing officers to issue fines, just like if you get a parking ticket, you got to pay the fine. In this way, if you break a code in the city's code of ordinances, then you can be fined for it civilly. I'll walk you through what we're doing. There's some it starts out with some definitions and I want to emphasize too, we're this is we're at a discussion phase. This is the first draft you've seen of it. We don't have a full commission here tonight and we're not expecting a vote on it. We're simply expecting just a discussion and a review of it and its staff's presentation of its resolution of this complete co package of code enforcement procedures. So after the definition section, we have in section two there, it simply says that code enforcement officers can issue violations, notice of violations and civil fines based on their observation and any complaint received. They can also allow offenders specified periods of time to remedy the situation without giving them a penalty. So we wanted to keep that discretion at bay for the officers so they can, depending on the situation, allow people to remedy it without issuing a fine at one time. That would be unlike someone who, for instance, parks in a handicap spot, an officer would not have discretion in giving that person the ticket or not. Section three just states what the citation must include, all those particulars, name, date, what offense it is, what fine could be assessed, things of that nature. And they can give that citation to the alleged violator or leave it with someone over 18 years of age at the home of the violator if the violator's not present, or they can post it in a conspicuous place or mail it by first-class mail. The key is too, after all of the after a complaint is generated or violation is generated, it will be input into the software system that you approved the code department from for purchasing earlier in the meeting. This all goes together. So what a field officer will eventually be able to do is to make a citation, take photographs of it in the field, print from the device, post it, and it's in this notification system. So we're going to have a data a central database and the database will be such that people can subscribe to it and say they want to receive these notices. So anyone who subscribes to what we're calling the lien holder notification system can get at least a monthly report, no more than weekly, report of any citations issued by the codes department within the city. And that was something that the House Bill 422 had in it and it was to generally allow any type of creditors or banks or tax purchasers to have the ability to say, are the properties that they are securing, do they have liens against them? The hope is if a bank sees one of its properties that it has a mortgage on in decline, it will either abate the nuisance and clean it up or fix it and charge it back to the loan. Again, it's just another tool to help. The banking lobby got that part in the bill also because some of these they had very problematic properties and sometimes the banks didn't know necessarily and they said, we wish we would have known because if we'd have known, we'd have fixed it ourselves as opposed to letting all these costs accrue and then us getting the property back in foreclosure and having a big bill to pay. So we hope that that will be a way to help and increase compliance. Section four outlines that whoever is considered to be in violation of the code, they can either pay a pre-described fine within seven days and that fine will be stipulated in this ordinance, or if they don't pay within seven days, they can file an appeal with the Bull District Court within 14 days. So pay the fine within seven days or not pay it and appeal it, or not appeal it and not pay it and then your fine will be a different amount. The law allows cities to say if you pay it within seven days, you can pay a cheaper fine. If you pay it after that, you can pay a more expensive fine. So if a hearing's requested, then the matter be scheduled Bull District Court. City has the burden of proving that a violation occurred. If the court finds a violation occurred, then a penalty will be assessed. If the court finds that no violation occurred, then the city be required to dismiss the action and release its lien. Section five is a fine schedule. And one thing that we're going to have to work on, and this is part of the discussion matter for you to, I don't expect answers tonight, but we wanted to have an all-inclusive list for codes and for the public to say, if we violate a certain chapter, what is the what is the fine going to be? So now, if you want to know about a specific fine, you have to know what chapter it's in in our ordinance book and then flip to it and find it. It's not that's difficult, but most people don't go to that trouble. It would be nice to have one page and say, you could post this on a placard anywhere and you can see it if you have a building violation, a fire violation, garbage, some type of nuisance or a tax issue, whatever it is, we need to have a set of fines for those offenses. The law says we can have, again, a penalty for a first offense, second offense, and then all others. Staff needs recommendations from you on what those figures should be. What type of fines do you want assessed for those types of violations? Then there's two sets, again, the seven-day price and then the post-seven-day price. Section six outlines the change in the law that the city was going to have will have a lien on the property for any fines imposed through this ordinance. And the city has a right to record those liens in the Bull County Clerk's office. The key is here that the city's lien is going to take precedence over all other liens, which makes it equal in priority to any tax lien, and that's ad verum tax liens. In order to get that what I'm calling super priority, then the city has to have in place the lien holder notification system that I discussed earlier to you. And again, that's to say, if the city's lien is going to take precedence over a bank's mortgage, then a bank has a right to know that it was placed there. So that's what the notification system does. Anybody can register for electronic delivery of the notification liens that were being placed. So any individual could prescribe to it or subscribe to it, any bank, any entity, the newspaper, radio station, anyone. It's it's open. There's going to be a pre-described form that's on the internet where people can can register for it. It's going to contain the violate the name of the violator, the address, photographs, a copy of the citation, if it's been appealed or not, or if it's been paid or not. Again, it's an all-encompassing program, again, to help increase transparency and knowledge of who is complaining, who is not. City's liens are good for 10 days and there's the next section talks about that if a nuisance is abated within a certain time period, that the city will obviously release the lien as required or if the if the fine is paid. And the rest of it, the last sections are standard sections. I just stated in there that if there's anything in this ordinance that conflicts with another provision in our code, that this section will supersede it. I know that's a lot of information and I'm sorry to review that in that much detail. But this has been an issue that staff has spent considerable amount of time on, giving you what we think you want. And that is, again, with the goal of having a cost-effective, efficient, and proactive code enforcement approach. And we think that we have achieved that through the monthly reporting, the municipal order that will hopefully be adopted once the flow chart is finalized. And then this ordinance empowering staff to issue fines, notice of notices of violations to hopefully increase compliance.
I'll move to accept draft ordinance 1891.
I have a question. Do we do we need a motion since it's a draft?
Oh, no, actually, neither. Yeah.
Yeah, the only I appreciate that, Commissioner. I think the ordinance is in good form other than the fine schedule. So what we would like and is some input on your part to say what fines are acceptable or?
Have you done any research as to what other cities start with?
They are all over the place.
All over the place. Well, I think wherever we start with, the first offense, I know in my industry, if you have each offense that you have, your fine is automatically doubled. So I think that's that's fair. But I don't as far as amounts, I mean, I really don't have any idea. I would look to you for guidance on that, but obviously some are going to be stiffer fines than others.
And it's possible too that.
Did you do a range?
It would probably since the code book involves a lot of people, some of these would necessarily, the fire chief may have a better understanding of what would be effective for different fire violations. be effective for different fire violations, city engineer may have different thoughts on different issues, you know, some of these are taxation issues, the code enforcement side of that may have some determination. It might be, as we're thinking out loud here, it might be appropriate for management, in a management setting, that those key personnel try to propose something for you, the city manager, and I haven't discussed that, but maybe that would be a reasonable way to proceed.
I think it is, and we can come back at a future meeting and have those suggested ranges or amounts for discussion before the city commission.
Okay.
Thank you.
In general, are you pleased with the approach?
Yes.
And does it, you feel like it accomplishes what you wanted to?
Thank you, Bridgette. Thanks, Stephen. Do I hear a motion that we move into executive session?
You've got the good cheat sheet down there. What are we going into, executives?
Personnel.
Just personnel?
Personnel matters.
I'd like to add a litigation matter to that as well, please.
Great. I move that we move into executive session to discuss personal matter pursuant to KRS 61.8101F, and to go into executive session to discuss litigation matters. You got pursuant to KRS 61.8101C.
Do you hear a second to the motion?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Close, like sign, we are in executive session. Do you hear a motion, we move back into regular session?
So moved.
Mr. Cyrus?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Terry. We are in regular session. Mr. Scott, or city madam clerk?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is made in second, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, like sign, motion carries. Is there any further business to come before this skeleton crew?
The skeleton crew was, this has not so been different for Commissioner Terry and I, it was just that Cottle was sitting in your seat. You did this not so long ago?
Yeah. I think we were fairly efficient for as much stuff as we had.
I said on the way in, that we, I think I see the problem, we get rid of Cottle, we get rid of Atkins, we can move.
We, we wish Mr. Cottle a speedy recovery.
Yes.
Yes.
I move.
Do we hear a move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.